I will call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 10, 2013. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Anton?
Here.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you all standing, please, you've got to be sworn in if you're going to give any testimony either for or against any item on the agenda tonight. So if you please all just raise your hands. I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. The gentleman with the baseball hat, you did not raise your hand?
I didn't.
Okay, just so I remember.
He wasn't listening to me anyways.
Don't be presumptuous. I would ask that you silence all electronic devices, if you would, please.
That's where I was answering. Always the one.
We do not have the minutes of our February 13th nor our March 13th meetings, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes when they are available?
Well, wait, we can't approve that, we haven't seen.
Can't approve them yet, yeah.
Well, I mean, a motion to hold off approving them.
Do we have, do you have a motion?
Table it.
We can just table it at this point.
Just table it? Okay, motion to table.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, first item, new business, planning and zoning item 13008. Lane Sekula regarding the property located at 101 North Washington for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a front porch with an existing non-conforming front yard setback in the R3 single-family detached residence district. B, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of an addition with an existing non-conforming setback in a side yard adjoining the street in the R3 single-family detached residence district. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Joe Pavone. I'm with Bradford and Kent Builders, and my client is Lane Sekula, and the previous owner of the property, William Spurling.
Okay, first item, since you are requesting a variance, would you please address the hardships?
Okay, the hardship, it's an existing house, it's a 1950's ranch, and it was positioned at an angle when it was originally built, and back in the 50's, I haven't mentioned, Will.
1952.
And presently, the house is, the existing house is 50% over the setback as it is. It's within, 50% is within the setback of 35 feet, which kind of makes that very difficult to kind of add on to, since it was built on an angle. And my client would like to, you know, add, you know, a new front porch. The front porch that's present is settling, falling away from the building, so the front porch is one separate variance, and we're just asking to remove the stoop and steps and the overhang area and replace it. The projection is going to be the same projection, we're asking to go a little wider. By going two feet wider in each direction on the front overhang, we're still going to be within, no worse than it is now as far as the setback goes. So we're still going to be, I don't have the exact, it looks like, once we're done with it, we'll still be 24.76 from the front yard setback, and right now, you have sections that are, you know, 22.93. So we're still closer than any, you know, than the worst part of the house at this point. As far as the rear addition goes, there's a corner of it that's 42 square feet of a 334 square foot addition. It's a porch area, it has an overhang, and that angle is into the setback, which happens to be, again, a 35-foot setback on that corner, which at that point, I mean, we're still going to be 28, we'll still be 28 feet away from, on the setback. So, you know, 28 feet on that setback. Oh, okay, I want to show it.
This way you'll be able to show the home audience also.
Okay.
You need to...
All right, there we go. So, there's a front porch here, so this corner front porch that we're building is going to be 24.76 away. There's parts of the house right now that are existing at 24, 22.93. So I don't think we're encroaching any more than existing. And again, all we're doing is doing maintenance work, replacing a porch that needs replacement. Again, we are making the overhangs wider to the sides, but it's not encroaching anymore. As far as this, where am I going here with this rear angle? Right there. Turn it around. Oh, boy. This, this angle right here is, again, we're 28 feet, let's see if we can get that whole...
Maybe zoom out?
I'm trying to get this.
It's a whole new one.
Oh, yeah. I'm trying to get this corner.
Just pull it, pull it towards you. There, there.
Ah. You do this more than I do. So, the porch right here, we're going to be 29 feet away from the corner lot line. Presently, there's a part of the house that's 7.17 feet to the lot line. So we're, there's another point that's 16.70 to the lot line, the other corner. So we're, we're way in, this is going to dress up the house a lot, give my client the additional space she needs, you know, I, we're not encroaching anymore. And I noticed, you know, just, you know, I don't, I don't know how much difference this makes, there happens to be a house at 101 Irving, and it's a block east of my client's home here. It's a brand-new construction, and maybe 10 years old, I don't know, and I think it's on a 50-foot lot. And that house is probably no, no more than 15 feet to Irving on that setback, and it's a corner house.
It'll be 101 North Adams.
Yeah.
Is it 101 North Adams?
It's 101 North Adams.
Okay, 101 North Adams, on the corner of Irving and Adams. So the setback to Irving at that point would be probably 15 feet. Now, it's a newer house, I don't know how and when that zoning law may have changed, perhaps it changed recently, but I think 35 feet is also, you know, a pretty substantial setback for both corners. Typically, I see in my business, 35 feet might be a front yard setback, but when you're on a corner, in a lot of cases, you know, 50 feet usually is acceptable. But in any case, we're not encroaching any more than what's there now.
As per your front yard setback, if I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the front yard setback at the time the house was built was 25-foot, so you're...
You know, I didn't look that up, but thanks for bringing that up. Okay.
Okay, staff, please.
Sure. As you can tell, the house was originally built at an angle, which is now within that required setback. The new additions will be within the required setback, which is why a variation is required, but it won't encroach any further toward the street. The angled home makes the front porch addition especially more difficult.
Okay, we will entertain a comment from the public at this time. Anybody, either for or against?
Will, you want to speak, if you're for it or against it? Well, since you used to own the house?
Well, it was in our family for 60 years. My brother and I became owners of the property when my parents, Aaron and Helen Spurling, passed away recently. We sold the house in good faith to Lane Sekula. The house was maintained properly during the 60 years that it was in the family, and I can only see that Lane and her builder are looking to improve the property and make it look better for the community.
Just for the record, sir, may we have your name, and if, would you sign a...
Certainly. First name is William, my last name is Spurling, S.P.E.R.L.I.N.G. Do you need my current address?
No, sir.
Okay.
That wouldn't be necessary, would it, Joe?
No, I think...
Any further public comment?
My family's lived here a very long time. You need to wait till you can use the microphone. My family's lived in Westmont a very long time. We've actually just placed variances on our family home at 120 North Grand Street, using the same builder. My brother's Brent Sekula, he was here a while ago. And Bradford and Kent worked on that home, I think they did a phenomenal job. That's why I was confident to hire them for this. I've lived in a lot of places. I've, I've lived in New York, I've lived in Chicago, I lived in the Gold Coast of Chicago for eight years. Most recently, I lived in Oak Park for seven years. And I came back here to care for my mother, whose cancer had advanced, and I just so happened to see this house. As I said, I grew up here. I rode by that house with my bike when I was a little kid, and I would say, I really think that's a really neat house. And I always see Will's dad sitting in the chair in the window, and I really liked that house. So I really like this town, and having lived in all those different places, nothing ever felt like home to me, except for this town, which brought me back here, which is why I purchased this house. But I need to bring it up to the times, and I need to make it comfortable for me, and that's why I want to invest my money here. I think this town's going great places. Most recently, on the website with the survey, and the things that you guys want to do to the town gives greater faith in that you guys will do that, and I plan on being here a long time, and I think I'll increase the property value of the house as well as the surrounding community. So I hope you approve my variance.
Thank you very much. Will there be any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would.
The joys of corner lots, and corner lots where the house is put on an angle. I don't know why. You're in a, you're in a bind, and I support, support the porch on the front. The work on the back will improve it also, and I support it, and one of the function, I say this almost every month, one of the functions of this commission is to make it as easy as possible, while we still obey the rules, to have people fix their homes so that they can stay here, instead of being ruled out of the, out of the town. So, welcome, and good luck.
Commissioner Pill?
I agree with Commissioner Thomas. I was out there on Sunday, so it's a lovely lot, a beautiful home, and this is only going to further enhance your living enjoyment of the home as well as the neighborhood. And this is exactly what this commission is here for. You're here for the right reasons, and I have no problem with this. I wish you the best of luck.
Commissioner Anton?
I'm snooping around your house today. I see, I see what you need, it's no problem, I have no, I have no other question.
Commissioner Van Buren?
I think being on a corner lot and having an angle like that is unique, and it's kind of nice, but it does, as you see, present some problems when it comes to side lots and setbacks. But I too feel that this would only enhance, it won't further cause any problems, I don't have a problem.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I think it's going to be, you know, a good thing to, to improve the property. You know, being on an angle, there's not much you can do about that. There are a handful of other houses in town like that, and you just kind of wonder why they were put that way. Had you been, you know, facing the street, there would be no issue. So, yeah, I'm all for it.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, I wish you good luck.
And I'd like to thank you for upgrading your property also, and I have nothing else to say. We'll close it, we'll close the comments. If I may have a reading of a findings of fact for a zoning code variance?
101 North Washington Street. Request for a variance to allow an encroachment into the front yard setback for a front porch for a residence with an existing non-conforming front yard setback. Criteria number one: The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The variance, if granted, will allow the applicant to rebuild the existing front concrete stoop and roof overhang, which currently extend into the front yard setback. This replacement will not further extend the setback encroachment, and replacement of this front stoop would not be possible without this variance. Criteria number two: The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The home currently encroaches into the front yard setback, and the applicant did not create this hardship. Needed replacement of this front stoop would not be possible without this variance due to the existing setback requirement. Criteria number three: The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The replacement front stoop will be the same size as the existing front stoop. The new front stoop and roof overhang will constitute an aesthetic and functional upgrade over existing conditions, and will enhance rather than alter the character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variation are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 13008. Item A, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of a front porch with an existing non-conforming front yard setback. So moved. Commissioner Van Buren with the motion, Commissioner Pill with the second. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Anton?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, if we may have our readings of finding of fact for a variance for the side yard?
Request for a variance to allow an encroachment into the side yard setback for an addition to a residence with an existing non-conforming side yard setback. Criteria number one: The property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The existing home is located on a corner lot and is situated in, at an angle with an existing encroachment into the side yard adjoining a street. Given the existing location and floor plan of the house, any reasonable expansion would not be possible without a variance. The proposed setback encroachment of the house addition and porch is less than the existing setback encroachment of the house. Criteria number two: The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The home currently encroaches into the side yard setback, and the applicant did not create this hardship. Any reasonable expansion of this home would not be possible without this variance due to the existing setback encroachment. Criteria number three: The variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed addition constitutes less of an encroachment into the side yard adjoining a street than the existing house encroachment. The proposed addition and porch will constitute an aesthetic and functional upgrade over existing conditions, and will enhance rather than alter the character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of an addition with an existing non-conforming setback in a side yard adjoining the street.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton? Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you go before Thursday evening committee or the whole. Good luck to you. Next item, planning and zoning item 13009. Walter Kroszek with Peter Kuzmanovich of Globe RE Development regarding the property located at 324 North Warwick for the following: A, zoning code variance request to allow the construction of two single-family houses on two lots of substandard width in the R4 general residence district. B, preliminary plan of subdivision request to split one lot into two buildable lots in the R4 general residence district.
Does this lot? Yes. And you just place it on there?
Sorry, could you help me? Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
There you go. Thank you. My name is Wally Kroszek, and I'm the project engineer with Southwest Engineering Consultants. Prepared this petition for the applicant, Mr. Peter Kuzmanovich. Peter was coming out of Toronto on an airplane, trying to make it, and he called, and he's tied up. Current property owner, Laura, is in the audience right now, and she's with us tonight. Peter is contract purchaser of the property, and is moving forward with the petition. We're here tonight to request a variance in the front yard width of a single-family home within the R4 zoning district. The property currently is in an R4 zoning district. It is 103 feet wide by 290 feet deep. Quick overview of the property is, it's located south of Ogden Avenue, one block east of Cass Avenue, and north of Chicago. The property abuts a single-family home on the north, a townhome development on the north, a vacant piece of property to the west that abuts Cass Avenue and just south of the power station there. South of that piece is a single-family home, and to the east of the project are single-family homes, all with 51 and a half foot lot widths. Originally, the petitioner was investigating a townhome building, two duplex buildings, and so we put some concept plans together, and we met with staff. And staff highly recommended, we took a real hard look at the 2013 comprehensive plan. And in that plan, it outlines single-family homes. So we left our meeting with staff, and we went back to the drawing boards, and we said, "We agree with staff. The best use for this property is single-family homes." So we look at the property, and with 103-foot lot width, almost 30,000 square foot of acreage on this lot, within the R4 zoning, the minimum requirement for a lot is 10,000 square feet. We have three times the amount in this lot. Splitting the lot in two, with a 51 and a half foot lot width by 295 feet, yields two 15,000 square foot lots, still over the minimum 10,000 square foot lots. Looking at the homes in the area, recognizing many of them have taken advantage of possibly splitting or coming to a 51-foot lot width, trying to build like-kind homes on a like-kind block, we went back and put together a preliminary engineering and a preliminary plat for this proposed re-subdivision. And the reason we did that is, Village of Westmont has very detailed stormwater management requirements for all subdivisions, whether it's two lots or 100 lots. Following all the engineering guidelines, we were able to engineer the site to provide the stormwater requirements that meet the village ordinance, and also meet all the setback requirements within the zoning. So tonight, we're here simply for the variance of a lot width on the setback. We've also prepared a preliminary plat of subdivision. We've outlined the stormwater management easements that would be required within the subdivision. Ah, we're going fast, I'm sorry, I'm getting nervous. Some of the overviews of the property, there are mature trees on the property, and the rear yard, which would be the west end of the lot, we're preserving all those trees. The lot drains from the west to the east, or from the rear to the front. So in order to meet the stormwater requirements, the detention basin needed to be put at the lowest point in the lot, which is the front lot. Recognizing we needed room for the detention, we designed the homes to have a 65-foot front yard setback, almost double what the required is, and that's shown in the engineering plans. Why are the houses so, set so far back? And that's to incorporate an area for the detention facility. When we submitted the preliminary engineering and the preliminary plat, staff had comments, the forester had comments. There was some conversation had about why the detention basin, how is it functional for the area in general, and how is it just benefiting this property, and how would it best suit the whole area of Warwick? In the past, there were some drainage issues and things that had come up, so I guess one of, one of the things that we're, we're talking about is, we're happy to move forward the way we have it engineered, but we're open to conversation about contributing to a regional detention facility, and still providing stormwater management in accordance with the, what they call the VC BMPs, or the volume control BMPs, which is detention for the lower storm events, which are the flash events that everybody seems to see, and possibly have conversations about the hundred-year event being down, down the road into a regional facility. Some of the, the product, we weren't sure whether or not we wanted to get into the product, but we felt with, with requests of a variance, we felt it best to have our best foot forward. We're proposing homes right around the 2,400 square foot range. The purchase price of these homes would be in the low to mid 300s. All the homes would have three bedrooms, or a loft, or a four-bedroom home. They'd all have two-car garages with the two-car parking in front of them. They'd all have 30-year architectural-grade shingles, they'd have cedar band boards, they would have maintenance-free exteriors, they'd have the introduction of brick, it's an option, to have a full masonry home siding and brick in all three elevations of the four models that we're proposing here. We would probably go to the market, see how the market received the product, and then hopefully, we would build for a third-party purchaser, or actually the homeowner that would live on the site. We feel that consideration for the petition would bring forth some stormwater management for an area that, that it could use it. We are making a contribution to the roadway program. Warwick is a paved street with ditches and sidewalk, but no curb and gutter and storm sewer. So we are making the contribution to the roadway program. There's a contribution to the detention facility. The homeowners that would purchase here would have the ability to walk and utilize the downtown area and the train station. We feel that the two new homes would increase the tax base, and ultimately, we feel that we would complement this neighborhood. And we feel that we would not impact with a townhome development or a duplex development and bring down the value of this, of this neighborhood.
Before we proceed, Mr. Kroszek, one comment. We have this-size engineering drawing, do you have one this size you could put on the screen?
I'm sorry, I don't.
This way everybody can see what...
I brought my old-fashioned...
What's going to be discussed here this evening.
Old-fashioned boards.
Could you highlight the intention, if you would, please?
These, sorry, this is the front setback of the two homes that we're, we're talking about, the two-car garage with the home behind it. A 30-foot front yard setback would fall here in concert with this single-family home and this single-family home. This is the area of the townhomes, and this is the area of adjacent lots at 51 foot. We slid the homes to the west, they have longer driveways, and in this area here is where the stormwater management facility would be. When we did this on 61st Street, the lot drained to the rear. So the detention fell in the rear, and the people were able to utilize it for play areas, and, and still, it was still a detention facility, but it complemented the rear yard. This is a detention facility, it becomes a landscape feature in the front yards, and the, and the conversation came, is it, I mean, it's, it's definitely a detention fund, and it's in their front yards, and I don't know if it totally complements the area, it's achievable, it's been engineered, it, it works, it meets the code and the ordinances, but we're open for conversation. We'd like to shallow it up, make it look like a small depression, still be able to provide stormwater management, and look at a contribution to the regional facility for downstream, more of a regional benefit.
Okay, sir, and then could you address the particular hardship you had... And then could you address the particular hardship you have for a split into the lots?
Again, I think the hardship is that it's a lot of 30,000 square foot in a time where property taxes are of everyone's concern and that in order to develop this piece of property and make it complement the area, the hardship would be that no one could reasonably afford to build here. And hence, why it sits vacant today. The property is, it's a phenomenal piece of property, has trees on it, but the price of it for one single-family home in this area is questionable.
Would you say then, that with the lots being developed to the north and the south of your lot, you're unable to buy any additional property to become legal-conforming lots?
Correct. Well, let me clarify. The property to the north is clearly developed. Property to the west would not complement this in any way.
Not the property to the west, the property to the south.
The property to the south is not for sale.
So you're stuck with what you've got?
Basically.
Okay. That I can understand as a hardship. Does that pretty well cover it then?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody from the public who will speak on this issue?
I'll be quick.
Please, if you would, give your name and sign in for us.
I've signed in. My name is Laura Piper. I'm actually not the property owner. The property is owned by Patricia L. Piper as the trustee of the Blanche Odenel Trust Agreement dated July 27, 2005. We don't have any specific objection to this petition that's being made, but we are the current property owner. And when this petition was made, it was signed by Globe Real Estate as the owner, and they are not the current owner. And so all we're asking is that any relief that's made with respect to the current zoning ordinances be conditioned on Globe Real Estate actually taking title. The current closing for this deal was scheduled for March 23 and was continued until April 12th, which is this Friday. If the property transaction does not close this Friday, the seller, who's Patricia Piper's trustee, is actually going to take the earnest money and cancel the transaction. So, you know, to the extent that the action requested here tonight is recommended for hearing on May 2, then we're going to ask that that be stricken because the property will not be sold to Globe. So I just wanted to raise that.
I would ask for clarification from our attorney.
We can discuss it tonight. However, I would ask for a second motion then, that anything that we would approve, assuming there's an approval, would be contingent upon the transaction actually occurring and that there's no action taken on the property.
If it doesn't get approved tonight, then...
If that sale does not close.
So would we make a motion either for, again?
We make that motion, then we'd have to make a second motion. And it should read something to the, recommend that the board of trustees...
I will ask for your guidance at that time.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Again, we're not recommending that no, that it's, that the action isn't approved. We're just asking that any action be conditioned upon them taking title. So again, if, you know, it can't, the total action can't be approved until it meets, until it meets the board, but if they don't close on Friday, then we're not going to close.
Our attorney told us that would not be a problem.
Yeah, and for clarification, we're here tonight to see what the direction and the flavor is of the project. If the flavor of this project is, the hardship can be realized, Globe is prepared to close and move the petition forward. And that's where the timing of all this came. We wanted to come in front of the zoning board. We wanted to present our case and our hardship. If the hardship was realized and we got a recommendation to the board, my client is closing on Friday. If after tonight, we can't get a recommendation and this committee feels that we need to go back and work harder at finding better solutions, then as Laura has indicated, the developer will have to make a business decision to determine whether he moves forward. So for tonight's purposes, and nothing is going to be signed or, and nothing's going to change, this is a recommending body that then will present to the board. But when we're presenting to the board, then we would be the owners.
Correct.
And so you don't object?
No, not to the recommendation.
Or to the development?
No, no. No, I don't, no, not at all.
So we're on the same team, right?
Right, exactly. Yes. I was just saying it needs to be contingent on your client taking title.
All right.
And we were only concerned because we were unaware of the hearing at all. My client actually drove past the property and saw the signs, so we just wanted to make sure that that was made clear.
Thank you both very much. Okay, public comment, please, if you'd sign and give your name.
Yeah, I'm Dave Wisbrock. I live at 325 North Warwick. And really hoping you guys consider not allowing them to build anything there.
You're right across the street then?
Directly across the street. And I would like to show you pictures on why we don't want nothing built there until our road is fixed. See this, let's see, can you see the lake right there? That's our front yard. That's directly across the street. That's what happens when it rains. And I spent over $10,000 doing a drainage system in my house, so I wouldn't flood out my neighbors. And I understand I was here a few months ago because I'd like to improve my house, but there's a difference. I live there and I'm staying in the community and I'm not going to flood out my neighbors. And there is a completely different from building a property and flooding people out and leaving. I know that's probably not their intentions. I know I wouldn't want to build a house and flood people and leave. But to put their word on it, I mean, I think if this does get allowed, they should insure our houses for at least 10 years because you don't deal with this. I do. And it goes through every house right across the street from there. You can see, I got dozens of pictures and I have a lot more. And I have the No Wake Zone signs, which are going back up through the neighborhood. If this project proceeds, I'm sorry, I will have my No Wake Zone signs. The boat will come back out. I'll be an immature person about it, but I don't want to go through flooding anymore than I already have. You've never lived in it like we have, over two years of flooding. 2006, 2.63 inches of rain, not one drop got in my house. They redid Chicago Avenue. 2008, 1.09 inches, first flood. 1.72 inches, second flood. 12, 0.4, 0.14 inches, third flood. I got a whole list here that can keep going and going. If I didn't spend the money I did, my house was, well, my house still is destroyed. I haven't fixed up my basement yet. I'm sorry, it's, listening to this, my nerves are pretty shot right now. I just, I can't see you splitting a lot and putting two properties. I don't care what kind of retention that's there until that street is fixed. There's major issues on that street. I understand why my neighbor didn't want to come up here. I completely understand because when that duplex was built on the corner, his house was destroyed, just like mine, right after the duplex was built. And I believe you lived there 18 years before the flood? 18 years, he lived in a house. They build a duplex and it's destroyed. So I understand his frustration back there because I have it right now, but I am coming up here to speak. I hope to God you do not allow them to build anything until that road is fixed. I am for fixing up the community. I am for building new houses. Those two houses would be great for my, to raise my property value, but you don't live there. You don't know what that could do to us. We've suffered enough on that street.
How do you think we could fix it then? If we leave it empty and it's always going to be water, if he comes in there?
I think the road needs to be fixed. There is issues with that road, really major issues with that road.
What's the truck going through there when it's, you know, pretty deep?
You can't drive through once you get to the 400 block, though. We get over three feet of water.
My thing is to you is that if every other house on the block is 51 feet and they've got, and it's a long, deep, you know, property, okay, so they make it that way. If you put him in there, then he's got to take care of that water. So whatever he's doing, DuPage County has to go and look at it and say, "The water's here. How are you going to take care of that water?"
The county redid Chicago Avenue. We didn't have flood issues until they redid it. So I don't count on our county for anything. I mean...
He's got to make, they've got to meet the engineering for DuPage County. And I know it doesn't always work. And there's plenty of places, I just, I'm mad about ComEd. I don't think anybody else gets, the power goes out. My power went out yesterday.
So did ours.
I'm tired of it. But at some point, we have to put the onus on someone else to correct that bit of, if he's going to put two lots, I'll just say, he gets two lots in there. Now he's got to keep his house from flooding, those two houses from flooding.
He's got to keep, plus, what if he floods us? Then what happens to us? I mean, I can't deal with another four, I went through over two years of flooding.
The engineering would be on it, but I wouldn't want to take on the engineering on it because I'm right down the street from you.
And personally, I believe the engineering is what screwed up Chicago Avenue and why we flood.
I think the early engineering and I think they didn't resize pipes, but I think they've got to resize going up and down some of these roads.
If they resized those pipes, I honestly would have no problem with improving our neighborhood. But I think something needs to be done before someone can build. It's just not fair to us. You're not getting flooded. I mean, did you see the pictures? Look at, that's a lake. That ain't, that ain't a little puddle. That is a lake. That's all water there.
Bring up a good point because how are you going to put houses in the lake?
Yeah. I mean, it's really not fair to our neighbors to do this. And I really don't want to be childish and put the No Wake Zone signs back out and, you know, I don't want to be seeing people come up looking at a house and I'll sit on my front porch and my Harley's running and acting like an idiot. I don't want to fall on the childish stuff. I mean, but I don't think it's fair to build on that property until the street is fixed. We want the street fixed. We really, that's what we want, the street fixed. You fix the street, make my property worth more, you know?
What the sprinkled bring will bring the drains. You need the storm drains in there. There's no curbs, there's no storm drains, so.
I mean, and he said that, he was talking about the nice sidewalks on the street. I want to know where those sidewalks are because I know we have all the sidewalks to nowhere going on Warwick. So your commuters, I mean, let me see, I know I have a picture in here of the sidewalks to nowhere. Yeah, there we go. There's your nice sidewalks that the commuters are just going to love. We could walk through the grass and then walk to the next sidewalk. I did it on Sunday with my son because he walked to my parents' house down the street. And it's fun taking that sidewalk, you know? Here's the other part of the sidewalk to nowhere. So I think there's a lot of major issues on this street before we can allow any more building. I mean, his house got destroyed after 18 years of no problems. I just can't trust an engineer. I mean, look at, you know, I showed the flood records. We had more water in 2006 on that day than any of those other days. And I didn't get a single drop in my house and none of my neighbors did. And we sure did not have any of these lakes. And since Chicago Avenue has been done, which I know is a whole other topic, but it goes back to engineering and the county. I mean, because Westmont didn't do that street. The county didn't, you know, we didn't have flood like that. The 400 block always had ponds in the bottom. I grew up on Warwick. I've lived there over 30 years. There was always a pond at the 400 block of Warwick, but never in the 300 block. I'm at the highest point. I should have never flooded. But I don't know, I really hope you don't. Otherwise, you know, it's going to be a fun time. You know, the boat will be back out, we have No Wake Zone signs, and I'll be a little kid and, you know.
Could I ask a favor?
Yes.
Maybe we have those pictures as part of our file?
Yes, you can.
If you would give them to Jill, please.
Do you have duplicates?
Do you want me to make copies?
Would you need duplicates of those back for yourself? Would you need duplicates of those?
Yeah, I'll make copies.
Okay. You'll see that he gets copies in?
I will.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, please. Next person?
I'd like to ask a question, but I'm not going to get up there and speak and declare everything. I'm going to know what happened to the No Build Moratorium. There was not supposed to be anything built.
Since you're not at the podium, I really can't hear you and...
We're going to listen to you.
Oh, please, come up here and I'll swear you in and we'll listen to you.
I'll, I'll...
Well, then, would you please be quiet while these people are up here? They want to talk. You're welcome to come up here.
Good evening. My name is Dragan. My wife, Helen Giovanoich, I'm the immediate neighbor to the north of this property.
What is your address, please?
I beg your pardon?
Your address, are you 328 then?
328.
Okay.
And I signed in. Basically, I will ask, first question, what constitutes a substandard building lot in Because the letter that was sent to me, it says that you will work on creating two substitute lots, substandard lots. What is a substandard lot?
It does not meet the width requirement for an R4 district of which your house is zoned for an R4.
That means we're going to have two buildings next to us and I will have to fight the water from that building, from both of these buildings. I have been working at this property for nearly 20 years trying to keep it nice and working with the water. The street, Westmont, from 47 to Ogden Avenue, is well-known to be the worst part of the Westmont that I have ever seen. And it is like an infiltration course when you drive down there. It's all water. Now I'm going to get more water and I don't think it's right. I truly feel that it is not right. On one side of us, they created a monstrosity duplex. Now they want to create two more homes on a small, substandard lots. And I'm using your quotation from the letter. I think it's wrong. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
I forgot one more thing. Can I go back up? Sorry, I had my nerves were going as I was thinking. If you look at Warwick Avenue to 300 block, we have more traffic than most streets because of that huge apartment building. So sneaking two more houses in the one lot, that's just, I mean, that's even more traffic. We got more traffic on that street than probably any other street in town. And I know Bob's wife isn't here, but she showed me the records on it actually, and I think our street has more traffic than the average Chicago street because of that apartment complex that snuck in there. And now you got the duplex, the apartment complex, and you're going to throw two more houses in there. That's probably a minimum of four more cars.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify too. So you'd rather have, instead of two houses, they could buy that thing and put in a complex or a duplex or whatever they can put in there. Multi-family. Wouldn't two houses be better, though, if you had a choice?
I think neither one, until the street's fixed, I think I'll have a lot of fun this summer. I mean, I hate to be that way, but I think it's going to be a lot of fun this summer.
I'm trying to say where I should go. Should I go for a house, two houses down the road? Because all they're asking for is to split the lot right now. Okay, then they got to come up with the engineering with all your pictures to figure out how to get rid of the water. I just want to, I want to know if you want to leave it one big piece so they can put something in there, big? Or we do two pieces and do two houses?
I'd like to see the village fix the street. And until then, you're not going to have happy neighbors on Warwick. You're not going to have a lot of happy taxpayers on Warwick, that's for sure. I mean, you guys come live, hey, if you want to buy my house, I'll sign this for you today. You could take my house and do whatever you want and I'll get out of this town. You can do that. Why don't you buy all our houses, Mr. Builder, and take up the whole street and do whatever you want? I'm all for that. I mean, we could relocate easily. Take my upside-down property that floods. Go ahead, put a retention pond there.
Will there be anybody else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Nancy Hessler. I don't live in the neighborhood anymore, but I did. I've spoke at length with my sister about the issues surrounding North Warwick Street and the Northeast Acres area, all the flooding and everything, and consequently, here I am tonight. My sister is out of town at the moment. This is her husband.
320 North Warwick.
320 North Warwick.
Right next door.
Yeah. So she asked me if I'd like to come here and speak to you folks and I told her no, but she told me to anyway. So I've prepared a little bit here because I'm not a very good public speaker. I'm here to speak on behalf of my brother-in-law, Bob Iverson, and my sister, Mary Robertson Iverson, who lives at 320 North Warwick. Their property is to the immediate south of this subject property. This property was in, was my childhood home and has remained in our family since our parents bought it back in 1961. That's more than 50 years ago. Now, Bob and Mary asked me to share the following historical information with you so that you might have a better understanding of the objections to the requested variance that you're hearing tonight. Around 1972, Northeast Acres was annexed into the Village of Westmont. Prior to this annexation, the majority of the properties on Warwick had been permitted to subdivide through DuPage County planning and zoning, as was brought up earlier. Westmont was forced to accept and grandfather in those extremely narrow subdivided lots as buildable for single-family homes. Also in 1972, the village lost a lawsuit for the development of the 32-unit apartment building that's to the south of Bob and Mary's home. This building is so large, it has three addresses, 312, 314, and 316 North Warwick. The village never wanted this lot to contain an apartment building, but had overlooked a previous... but had overlooked a previous commercial rezoning that had issued in conjunction with the old Pick 'n Save grocery store that was going in. And at that time, apartment buildings were permitted on commercially zoned property. In the mid 1980s, the village reviewed the zoning map and noticed the apartment building in the R1 zone Northeast Acres. While all other areas of Northeast Acres were rezoned as R3 single-family, the village decided to zone the six properties on the west side of the 300 block of North Warwick to validate that, that apartment building, not realizing how it even got there in the first place. Throughout the 1980s and the 90s, the lots that had been subdivided by DuPage County began developing. Consequently, with each heavy rain, water began to sit larger and longer on the properties located in the Warwick Bowl area of the 400 block. In the early and mid 2000s, the village permitted the development of the six townhome units on Melrose Avenue as well as the duplex at Melrose and Warwick. The multifamily developments along with the apartment property have extremely large amounts of impervious areas. With every new construction project on Warwick over the past 40 years, the floodwaters have spread, totally engulfing the 400 block and most recently, the 300 block. The village issued a development moratorium ordinance in 2010. That ordinance is still in effect today. Since the village cannot locate sufficient monies to address the stormwater issue, our flooding is sure to continue. Now, on a side note, you know, you were talking about resizing the, the sewer piping along the roads there, which would go a long ways if you could teach the water to drain uphill. Because it is like a 15-foot uphill. So, another problem that the 300 block of Warwick has, is overpopulation. Overhead projector to the left. If I don't write down everything, I'll forget it.
I thought I had a bad brother.
Okay, let's see where we're at. I'm gonna go sideways here. Um, the number of single-family homes on Warwick between Naperville Road and Ogden, total 42 houses. That's the outlined in red area there. I, I have that. Compare that to the 43 households on the six lots that are zoned R4. And that I have highlighted in yellow. You can barely see it, but it's in the, the lower right of that area. So that's 43 households in one little block area as compared to 42 households in the rest of the street. Clearly Warwick Avenue has been overbuilt. Currently, Mary and Bob live with 16 households to their south peering down the full length of their property. They don't have very much privacy. And if a couple more houses are built on the other side of them, there goes all their yard privacy. A request for variance needs to show unusual hardship. As of today, Caldwell Banker of Clarden Hill stated that the sale of this property had not closed. And it appears that this variance is a contingency for the sale to finalize. The village development department reports that the proposed construction is speculative. So in other words, the project is a gamble. I mean, you don't have people ready to move in, right? It's just, yeah. Yeah. Clearly, the hardship is not on the part of the petitioner, but rather on the residents that currently live on the Warwick Avenue. My sister and her husband would have no objections to a nice, single-family home to be built there, which could replace the single-family home and garage that had been removed by the current property owners. They respectfully request your denial to the variance in front of you. The project would only harm Warwick Avenue and its flooding problems, and they have the history to prove it. On a personal note, like I said, I grew up there. And, you know, we, we had a ditch in the front of the house and every so often it would collect some water. And that was during the torrential rains in the spring, after the melting and the, the, the ground was already saturated. It, it was nothing, nothing like it is now. Bob and Mary had to sink thousands of dollars into that house to get that U.S. waterproofers to come in to fix it because the water there is just constant. There's constant flooding. And that needs to really be addressed before you can move on to building more roofs and driveways or parking lots or, you know, anything that's not gonna absorb water. You know, it's just not natural. It's gonna stay on the surface. It's gonna keep flooding, you know, these, these good people here. And as you mentioned earlier, you want to keep people in Westmont. You want to keep them in the neighborhoods and especially these old-fashioned neighborhoods. And, you know, what you're gonna end up with is, is people just want to get the hell out because you can't deal with all the repairs that you have to do to your homes and, and all the flooding. And, and it's even worse if it falls on deaf ears. I, I just can't see how you could justify splitting up a lot and building two houses where there was one. And, you know, where with the one house there, you had flooded with two houses and two driveways? It's gonna be worse. They had, well, I took it off, of course. But that, that retention pond that he speaks of putting in there, that's, that's not gonna, that's gonna hold the proverbial drop in the bucket. It's not gonna do anything to relieve the flooding problems. And you're gonna have your boat out front and the signs and, and he's gonna be sinking a lot more money into his house and, you know, it, it, the problem, the, the core problem needs to be addressed before you even think about subdividing and making these substandard lots and building more and more in the neighborhood that's already overbuilt. It's kind of a breath of fresh air to see an empty lot once in a while. Let's see. Not, well, not to mention that the owners of 324, they never had any intention of splitting up the lot because Mary and Bob had offered to split it up years ago and, you know, because they were afraid that something like this would happen. That somebody would try to put in a duplex or, you know, some kind of large building right outside their bedroom window. And if it weren't for the retention pond, they'd be outside their bedroom window too. But, you know, they had offered to buy half of that lot and, and we were told by the, um, by the owners, all or none. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say. And I do have copies of this if you're interested.
Please, if you care to, leave that with Jill.
Thank you.
Bob Iverson, I live at 320 North Warwick and the only thing I have to say is, with this building, until we fix the drainage on the street, it's gonna be, hardship is all on the neighbors, not on them. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna hold off the public comment and I'm gonna say a few things here. From what I'm seeing,
They don't say it though.
Is, we are asked whether or not we can recommend approval to subdivide an existing lot. We're really not concerned with the water retention. That is a function, or the water retention is a function of the building permit. That is not the purview of this board. We can listen to it. We can recognize it's a problem. We can make it part of our, uh, motion to the Board of Trustees that this is a very serious concern, but it is not the mo, the business of this board. Now, let's go a little further. This lot is in the R4 general residence district. Staff has asked these folks who want to buy the lot to build two single-family homes. Now I'm gonna ask Jill, if this lot were not subdivided, what could these people put up on this property without a variance?
With the moratorium, please, just so we know.
You're talking about the lot as it is?
The lot as it is.
They could put in one single-family home?
On R4?
On R4? It's multifamily.
On, on R4, I mean, they, if they wanted to,
If they wanted to go multifamily, I, what I'm asking Jill, what could they put in?
They could build up to five units.
With the moratorium?
They'd still have to stick with the 30% and they'd have,
Seven, five units?
Right. I mean, we, you'd have to meet that. We'd have to see what could be built there, but technically, they could build up to five.
That's all I'm saying.
So, what we are being, what staff has gone to these folks, just so you understand what everybody's coming from, this gentleman could put up a five-unit condo. Staff has talked to them and said, we want, our comprehensive plan says we envision this street as a single-family residential street. So they have talked him into subdividing the property so that it would be single-family homes. Now, a lot of you people are, uh, folks, you've got the very narrow lots. It's pretty hard to tell the guy across the street from you, I don't want you to have a narrow lot. I got one, but I don't want you to have one. You understand what, where we're coming from?
It's not hard to say when you're underwater. You guys have a good night. I understand why you didn't talk because this is a waste of time. We're gonna have fun this summer, buddy.
Whoa. Oh my God.
And Marie, am I correct or am I?
You're correct.
Now,
At this point, we're not even talking about building anything. We're talking about a subdivision.
Can I, can I address that?
We're still in the public comment, so trustees will hold their questions, please, if you want to come back up here.
You stopped that public comment. You got slammed.
You stopped a public comment, right?
I didn't stop the public comment.
You didn't.
Oh, no, not whatsoever.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I do that all the time.
What I did was clarify a few points as to what we're, we are in, what we're doing.
Um, yeah. Okay, yeah, you're, you're talking about looking across the street and seeing, you know, substandard lots, you know, subdivided lots. But those were grandfathered in. So there is really not a lot that anybody could do about that. That was before the village of Westmont was the village of Westmont.
I've been on this board since 1973. Remember, we had what we called the Corona Ordinance? Steve Corona was a board member here. Every 100-foot lot by 300 that came in while it was in the village, this was after the, it had been,
Annexation.
Annexed, was granted. Until two or three years ago, one came in. Do you remember this one? And it was denied. That's the first one. Remember, 73, 40 years I've been here. So they have been granted pretty much each time someone requested it. Not, not, this isn't county, this is Westmont.
Right.
Okay, let, I just want to clarify that.
Okay, so then maybe I should clarify it. In the 300 block of Warwick, they, they were all grandfathered in. They were all,
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
When they came in, but subsequently.
Subsequently, in, in other areas of Westmont, yeah, sure, I'm sure. You know, there are some tiny lots there and, and, you know, crowded areas. But in, in this area of Northeast Acres, what you see is what you get. It was pretty much like that when the village became a village. Pardon?
What year was the annexation?
1972. You're testing me.
No, 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 but I'm, that, that really clarifies what I'm saying to you. Many have come in since that.
Yeah, yeah.
All of them have been granted, not under county, but under Westmont.
Right, right, yeah.
Just, just to clarify.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody who will speak to the issue of subdividing these lots? Not about flooding. Because it is not the purview of this board to correct a flooding problem. That is a function of the Board of Trustees of the village of Westmont. Recognizing the fact also that this gentleman, without a variance, without coming before this board whatsoever, could put up a five-unit townhome on that lot. And nobody could say one word about it. And your name, sir?
My name is Scott Johnson. My address is 323 North Warwick Avenue. It's a lot property directly east of this lot, uh, these lots that they're planning on building. I guess now I have a substandard lot, which makes my property feel even better now. But, um, seeing that I'm gagged, I guess, about talking about anything, all I ask is two questions. I am against it, completely against it. Why? I won't talk about that because we're not allowed to talk about that. And second, what happened to the moratorium? He was not allowed to ask. I will ask. What happened to it? Why is this getting pushed to the side? I appreciate that these, these people want to build a new house and want to try and upgrade our neighborhood. Our neighborhood can't be upgraded right now. No matter how many buildings they put in, we can have this threat hanging over our head that the, you guys are planning on approving a whole apartment complex. That doesn't fix anything, though. I'll leave it at that. What happened to the moratorium?
Mr. Johnson, let me address your question. First off, you were incorrect in that you said you were not allowed to talk about the flooding issue. You are, perfectly. This board cannot do one thing about it except make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees that this property handles its stormwater.
I hope it doesn't fall on deaf ears then.
Well, true, true.
So, that's all I can say.
And secondly, we are not here where we are approving a apartment building or anything like that. The gentleman could put one up without even coming before us.
And I understand that, but I mean, we also don't need to have that threat held against us. So if they want to go in that direction, I mean, I understand that. I appreciate that the neighborhood could be upgraded with houses. But that, that, that does not help us one iota. Does not help us as a neighborhood one iota.
You get houses put in, you get that movement of being able to upgrade. They're gonna have to pass,
But when houses are under, well, not allowed to talk about that though, so.
You guys, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to field out to see which way to go. If you guys want to look at, if you feel a lot of water, nothing's ever gonna get done, I guess, from what I see.
Well, we, we now have, I, because I believe this is open because that is a building commission. There's a new house going on a very substandard lot on the 400 block of North Warwick that will probably be within four and five feet underwater. Because that is at the low point and now all of a sudden, there's gonna be building going on there.
I'm worried about the substandard thing. I mean, my house is on substandard. My house is 59 feet and it's only like 100 feet deep. So, substandard to me is 35 feet, when you can't put a house in that's super narrow. 51 feet, not bad, but the long, deep yard, I think that's excellent. But I'm for houses. That's, that's all I want to say.
You know, I am too, but I'm also about my house that I paid for and I bought, you know, and, and I have,
And you own that property. They paid for and bought too. They need to develop it someday. And I'd rather not see gigantic, um, building going. I want any more gigantic building.
And well, and it was, it, it has been passed down because I have lived in the neighborhood for 11 years and I understand how it was. And it did have a single-family home on it that was chose to be torn down, so. You know, I've lived in Westmont for over 20 years. I've lived in this house for over 11 years. I've never seen it this bad. And that's all we're here about. You know, we want our voices to be heard. We don't want to be, you know,
Absolutely.
So, that's what we're trying to do.
May I ask a question without being a smart aleck?
Absolutely.
We've just had, we've just had a general election for trustees in this village. How many people, how many of you folks even questioned any of the trustees as about flooding on the streets? Well, very good. I'm very glad you said that, Mr. Iverson. A one. What a perfect time when this thing was coming up before this board and you voted on trustees yesterday.
Well, it's never an issue in the village. We're too worried about the TIF. We're too worried about downtown Westmont.
These are the people who are gonna make the rules in the village. Why don't you question them before they,
I don't, I don't know why this subject's coming up if we're not allowed to be bringing up other subjects, so, you know.
Well, we're, we're talking in circles.
Well, it is, but that's what I'm saying. If we're not allowed to talk about that, now we are, then let's talk about the flooding.
I think what he's saying is not that you're not allowed to talk about,
I, I do. And I mean, I, I did. I talked to Jim at any time.
This board doesn't have flooding as part of their responsibility.
As I said, I hope our voices are heard and it's accepted and people understand where we're coming from.
Perfect time for you to talk about this, sir, would be when this, whether we recommend approval or not approval, is when it goes before the committee of the whole. These are the people that have the say-so. We do not.
That are elected.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you.
I didn't want you to drain all the blood out of that hand.
It was almost. We, I keep hearing development moratorium. And so, and I think some people, I, I know what I think of when I hear development moratorium. I, I, I understand the English language. What that means is, is what I, I think it means, it might be different from everybody else here. I need the staff to explain what development moratorium is. Does it mean that nothing can be built? Does it mean anything that's built has certain rules? What? And if you would do that, please.
Sure. As a result of the flooding, the village ordered an engineering study in 2010 and the moratorium restricts this area to 30% lot coverage rather than 40%, which is allowed. the moratorium restricts this area to 30% lot coverage rather than 40%, which is allowed within the rest of the village. It also recommends a single-family and no more than duplexes in the area. So it does allow development, but only up to 30%, 30% lot coverage. And I'll pass out some of the ordinances that restrict that, so everybody can see them.
We've never received any, or I've never received any, oh, I'm sorry.
So a lot of the, so a lot of the public is under the assumption that nothing's allowed. They heard moratorium, so they hear that nothing can be built, and now all of a sudden, somebody's coming in here, "We're gonna divide this and that." Okay.
Okay, we'll go back to public comment. Is there anybody else who will speak on public comment? Please, if you will, sir, give your name and sign in.
I live at 27 Melrose Street in the Westmere Glen Townhome Association. Several of my neighbors couldn't be here tonight, but I'm speaking on sort of many of our behalves, and it really goes to Commissioner Anton's point. We would most prefer the developer maybe be convinced to build one really nice house behind us, but that probably isn't going to happen. So the best case would be to subdivide the lot to ensure we could have single-family homes behind us raising property values, rather than, as you've stated, some giant monstrosity going in and ruining property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who will speak from this on the public? Seeing no hands raised, we're gonna close the public comment. We'll start with Commissioner Fleet. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, staff. Excuse me, Roy.
The lot is on R4, which, as we discussed, allows up to multifamily, but because of the flooding issues and the comp plan recommendations, staff recommends that no more than single-family be proposed here. The applicant is requesting a variance for lot width only from 60 feet to 51 feet. The lot is located in a known drainage study area, and it is therefore subject to the moratorium requirement of 30% lot coverage, and they are proposing to be under that 30%. The proposed homes do not need a lot coverage variation. Because the lot is being requested to be split, stormwater detention is required, so the engineer is showing a front yard drywall and a detention basin in the front. Staff recommends that the detention be pushed back from the street and narrowed between the two lots to avoid a deep basin appearance next to the sidewalk.
All right, I'm sorry, now Commissioner Fleet.
Hi, staff. Going back to the moratorium just for a second, it allow, if I understand it right, it allows 30% lot coverage, and what we're looking at here is if the lots were subdivided, that they would be under the 30%.
They'd be less than that. They'd be around 24%, I believe.
One concern that I heard that didn't have to do with flooding was the close proximity on the property to the north, or the, excuse me, the lot that would be subdivided into the north-side lot, if you will, and the people who are living at 328, I think, were concerned about a house being built that close to them in the proximity of what would be called the wooden fence that's existing right now at 328. If you went there, there's a wooden fence, a six-foot wooden fence there. And my question to the prospective builder here on our setback is, is there any problem about setting the whole house property back farther so that it's not immediately adjacent?
If I can make a comment as the current owner, as representing the current owner, the old guy step up.
The home audience, the home audience cannot hear you.
Sorry. The existing home that was torn down a few years ago was actually on the lot line, and there was an easement that's been removed from title since then to allow them to maintain the property. So for 50 or 60 years, there was a house right next to that house anyway, and from what I understand from his proposed plans, that house is farther away from the lot line than what was there for many years while that owner lived there.
Okay.
That's interesting.
And just to understand something more, is that whatever we recommend here is that goes to the, to the next level up, that the engineering work goes in, that would go in to making sure that this retention system would work if, in fact, two houses were built there. There's this line that comes out, it looks, the line that comes out of the retention area that ties into, did you show that?
Just leave it, it'll...
It ties into the sewer or the stormwater.
That's the storm sewer.
How much of that is existing right now, and how much of it would be?
None of it's existing.
Okay, so this, this would be, this line that would be put in, could you highlight that on there?
Yes, sir. We're proposing to add 100 feet of storm sewer and set a catchment in the right-of-way, which will help pick up the drainage that's in the existing ditch now that's on the west side of Warwick. And then that structure would then fall into what they call the restrictor structure, and that structure will restrict the water from this 30,000 square feet that fills this infiltration basin, and that will release that water at a .1 CFS rate, which means a much slower discharge into the existing storm sewer. So although this storm sewer may not relieve regional issues, it will definitely address this 30,000 square feet and not add that to what is existing now. So what happens under the existing condition is that sheet flows into the ditches and through the ditches and culvert system, it goes south. This storm sewer will now pick that up, put it directly into a pipe, and that's, that's part of our proposal.
And that, okay.
That storm sewer, I have pictures I'll bring to the village tomorrow of the water shooting back out, the storm sewer he's talking about attaching to, so I don't care how slow it goes in, the water shoots up that, just so you know, it's like a sprinkler. And I'll bring up plenty of pictures. I got about 100 of them at the house tomorrow. I'll bring it and drop it off to you. That sewer does not work. Yes, that's the one by my house that he's talking about, he said directly west.
But, sir, for our developer, are you talking about, that's new pipe that would be sized to take runoff that we're looking at?
It would tie into the old one.
No, no, exactly, sir.
Yeah.
What we're proposing to do is, we're proposing to tie storm sewer to storm sewer. And this pipe here is sized as an 18-inch pipe that goes south, and we're proposing to bring a 12-inch up another 100 feet into the right-of-way. So, you know, if there's a flooding condition downstream, technically speaking, a hydraulic head is occurring downstream, it's because there's further drainage problems, and then, of course, if that hydraulic heads realize it's gonna bubble, but then it, we're adding stores, hopefully it drains.
Would you delineate on that map, please, all of the new stormwater, stormwater piping you're gonna put in?
Yes, sir. We have 100 feet of storm sewer to this catchment, 20 feet to the restrictor.
So you're going 100 feet down, then?
Yes, sir, 100 feet to the existing.
Just so I understand, okay.
The problem is there, though, is that does not tie into a storm sewer that works. If you're tying into the storm sewer that doesn't work now, that, why do you flood like we flood? I don't understand how you can even attempt to do that, and the storm sewer doesn't work now, don't care how slow you put it in there. If water's coming back out of the storm sewers now, how does adding water slowly into the storm sewers, I don't, I'm asking to explain this to me, because I must be stupid, that I don't understand how you can add water to a sewer that's overflowing, that holds water on our surface for days.
Dave?
I don't understand.
You've had your chance to talk on the flooding problem.
I'm asking about the pipe that he's talking about.
I understand, but the public comment has now been closed. We are on the trustees, commissioners, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to understand, I'm sorry.
So if I get this right, then the, well, we're putting in a new pipe that comes down to this catchment on the south end of that drawing.
Yes, sir.
And who has, well, our engineers see that we're not exacerbating the problem by bringing the water down there?
Yes, that's the intention of the permits, is to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay, and if our engineers determine that that's a probability, what's, what's the fallback position, then, with our, with our developer?
I'd have to check with the engineer to see how she'd work that out as part of the permit process.
Okay, but there would be lots of conversation and lots of work on that.
Roy?
Yeah.
But please, again, we're deviating from the lot division.
But that pipe is part of the overall, overall plan, is just, that's all I wanted to bring out. I don't have any further.
Okay, Commissioner Fidesco.
Okay, I, we all understand the current flooding issues in that area, and what happens here is basically controlled by the process, you know, whether the basin is going to be large enough, whether that pipe is going to go to something that is, is capable of handling that flow, you know, that's all gonna take care itself through the process. My concern is this detention, retention, this basin in the front. I live in the south part of town. I know this area, I drive through that area a lot, but where I live, on South Womette, they built two houses. Those houses, and by the, by the way, I want to make sure that you understand, the word speculative was mentioned earlier. Two houses were built down there on South Womette at 58th Street with retention basins in the front. Spec homes. One sat idle for over three years, the other went almost five years before it sold. Empty houses. The one that sat there for almost five years, I'm not exactly sure, you know, it could be four, but for the longer period of time, had issues with it inside because it sat there idle so long. The people had to renovate a new house. I think that was all due to the fact that they had retention basins in the front of their homes. Nobody wants to look at a pond in front of their house. The only way, I mean, I'll be for subdividing this, however, I think those homes need to be pushed back the lot, and that, that basin needs to be made wider, larger, longer, less deep, so that it doesn't look like a pond out there, because it's going to detract from the neighborhood. You may not be able to sell those homes. That's my point. I mean, we all know the water issue, but this, I mean, it's just, doesn't look good. People don't want to buy homes with lakes in front of them. And when I say lakes, I mean potential lakes by being a deep depression. So if you can, if that can be made elongated, you know, less deep, I think that's what you should consider, and including in that is moving the houses back further so that you can get that depth differential. That's, that's my say, you know, I don't have anything else.
Commissioner Van Buren.
Based on what I said before, the precedent is pretty well set on the ability to subdivide a lot of this size, so I don't have any problem with the subdivision of the lot. I, obviously, we hear you, hear you loud and clear. The cash in lieu of, in no way can I see that that fly in the cash in lieu of, and this is getting off a little bit, but when it gets to the Board of Trustees, if we do pass it, this is, this is obviously a big problem, and it's gonna have to be confronted. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Anton.
I am also not for cash in lieu, that's not gonna happen. I would, I'd rather subdivide it into two to get houses, I'm for houses. I'm not for townhouses or any of that other nonsense. So that's where I'm at. I'm at, I gotta look at all sides. I've got people who own it, who want to sell it. I've got improvements coming to the village. I want houses, so that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Pill.
This is one of those that's got two interesting sides to it. On one hand, I think the two homes there is better off than anything else that you could build there, and I think they're nice-looking homes. And I think, somebody brought up earlier that it might even increase the other property values of the homeowners in the area. I think it definitely would. On the other hand, though, you've got a situation, and we could talk about precedents, but we've got a precedent here for flooding, and I think that's, that supersedes any other precedence. We've got an inconvenience, we've got a life safety situation, and we've got a health situation with all this flooding, and there's just not been a lot of action on it. Any development here, whether it's two houses, one house, or townhomes, condos, whatever it is, is gonna further complement, or, excuse me, complicate and compound the existing situation that goes on there. I also agree with Commissioner Fidesco. I think front yard detention, particularly in the four-foot level, is about, this is my personal view, as ugly as you can get. I've driven by several, and every time I see one of those, I go, "Oh, my gosh, why would you do this?" And I understand why you're doing it, I just think there has to be something better, and that may be that we've got to get this thing fixed before we allow any more construction there. So at this present time, I'm not sure I can support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas.
I, I agree with my, Mr. Commissioner Pill, on all his points. Four-foot front, it would be unsightly, I understand we're talking about dividing here and that, but that's just what you're gonna be running up against, and as far as the developer goes, the residents need to be at the meeting of the whole, where you talk about two people who are elected and are responsible for what your concerns are. They're the ones with the budget, they're the ones with the budget problems about what can be done to fix it, and not much can go on. You can't, you can't stop anybody from building. We cannot say to you, "No, you can't, you can't come in," because you can't. We know what moratorium means now in this case, so you can't stop the development, but you can bring your concerns, and why in the world would you exacerbate a problem that is so obvious and has been so obvious for so long? And us voting yea or nay on what's before us here tonight, which is the dividing and that, has no effect at all on what your problems are. But that needs to be dealt with at the next meeting, and where you will meet your new trustees also. And, well, and so, that's where we're at, so, good luck.
It's the next meeting.
That's all I have.
Jill, and the ordinance for the moratorium, reading it, the lot coverage requirements for the residential districts says 40% for R1 through R3, and which currently do not provide any maximum lot coverage requirement for the R4 and the R5 districts.
Right.
So we have no maximum lot coverage for this R4 district. Want to point that out to my fellow commissioners.
I'm scared of that, so I want two houses and not...
Except in the R4.
I agree.
Right. Yeah.
So we're not bound by any lot coverage by the moratorium in an R4 district.
Where did the 30% come from, then?
From R1 to R3. We are an R4 district.
Okay, we subdivide, does it revert back to R3?
No, it stays R4.
No, it stays R4.
So it'll be a non-conforming R4, well, you can do anything less than R4.
R1 through R3 is restricted to 40%. R4 and R5 do not have restrictions, except in the moratorium area. The moratorium area is 30% for the whole area.
For the whole, so we are still at 30%, but, given with 15,000 square foot lot... But, given with 15,000 square foot lot, we are well below 30%. Now, as I see it, we are simply voting on whether or not we're going to allow us, or recommend approval of subdividing a lot.
And the variation, the lot width variation.
It variants in the R4. Our decision, as I see it, is to be made according to the existing rules ordinances of the Village of Westmont. Right now, the Village of Westmont has said there's a moratorium in there for the R4, cannot exceed 30%. It's the only rule we've got.
Well, the Village of Westmont also says that the lot has to be 60 feet unless we say otherwise.
Unless they show a hardship. That's what we're granting on the variance. So whether you agree with the variance.
Well, and hardship can be like beauty. It can be in the eye of the holder.
That is true. That is true. Now, one of my fellow commissioners was suggesting that elongating and widening the detention basin to get greater stormwater retention. I might suggest to you, for right now, your stormwater retention basin literally reaches from driveway to driveway. You could not do it that way.
Understood. And I think after we got the comments back from staff, staff had, in fact, pointed that out to us. And so this is simply just a preliminary engineering.
Understand.
And under the final design, we have to take all those into consideration, meet the ordinance. So clearly, we'll be sliding a little bit further to the west, elongating the drives, narrowing the basin, trying to take some of the depth away from it. Hearing conversations tonight, cash in lieu off the table, I heard that loud and clear. We'll be looking at an implementation of an underground storage facility, some storm traps. I heard the concerns that it's not favorable. It hasn't been received well by the market. Clearly, we're looking at some combination of underground and surface, low flows, underground, hundred-year vents above ground. Hearing the neighbors, understanding the concerns, drainage area, right, wrong, or indifferent, detaining some of the whole has got to be better than free release of all. And I respect everybody's position. I don't live far from town. I've done a lot of engineering in town. I've done probably 12 or 14 of the existing subdivisions in town. I've done the lot splits on 61st Street. I've done Rose's work in town. I've worked with Noriel. I've worked with this village for the last 15 years. And I know Westmont engineering. I'll sit down with the engineers. We'll evaluate what's going on there. The developer wants good neighbors. It wants to be a part of this community. It doesn't want to feel it's in a combative position. It wasn't combative with staff. It won't be combative with the neighbors. And we'll work with the engineering, and we'll figure out what's going on there and what we can do. We will do. We will definitely, we will definitely do the retention on our site that will address our site. We will be adding a pipe in the right-of-way. It will add a pipe to the right-of-way. And it will improve the drainage on the west side of the right-of-way. With that said, I clearly can see that in the final engineering plans, as we move forward, we have more work to do here.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
In lieu of a detention basin, a surface detention basin, if you were to go completely underground with the cribbing that they have, the plastic cribbing, it gives you 95% volume retention.
All aware of it.
And according to what Commissioner Fidesco talked about, the longevity of the unsold homes with a detention basin in front, if you were to cover that, sod it...
It would look like kind.
It'd look like a...
It'd look like everybody else's.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, I think we've talked this thing to death. Any further questions? All right, since we have a request for a variance, may we have a reading of the findings of fact?
324 North Warwick, request for a variance to allow the creation of two lots of substandard lot width in the R4 general residence district. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. Due to the large size of the existing lot in conjunction with the smaller size of surrounding lots, it is not economically feasible to develop one single-family house upon the existing large lot. The property cannot yield a reasonable return without the proposed subdivision and variance for lot width for two single-family homes, as development with a multifamily development would violate the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. Development of this single-family lot with a multifamily development is contrary to the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And development of this single lot with one single-family house is not economically feasible due to the large lot size. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. Numerous lots in the surrounding area, including single-family houses to the immediate east, contain substandard lot widths. This proposed subdivision will therefore be consistent with surrounding lot sizes and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. All are unanimous, except Commissioner Pill, who declines. The readings of the finding of fact are hereby adopted for a variance. Under Planning and Zoning Item 13009, entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item A, a zoning code variance request to allow the construction of two single-family houses on two lots of substandard width in the R4 general residence district. So moved. Second. Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Pill?
No.
Okay, three and two. Oh, Chairman Richard.
Yes. Okay. Item B, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a preliminary plot of subdivision request to split one lot into two buildable lots in the R4 general residence district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Pill?
No.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees that, considering the first two items, that extreme care be given to any impact that the severe flooding in this area could conceivably have upon. They're acting on this recommendation of the board. So moved?
Second.
That's a motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Let's talk about the motion.
I'd like to add an amendment to the motion that there'd be, that we not favor any cash in lieu of.
Absolutely.
I would, I think that would be a very good idea. Any further questions?
Do we need to second the amendment?
I think there was a...
What process do we need to...
We have to vote on the amendment, or...
There was an amendment. We needed a motion on the amendment.
Okay, motion on the amendment from Commissioner Pill?
So moved?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Okay, we have two motions.
One motion amended.
Let's combine them into one.
One amended motion.
Yeah, it's amended.
Okay, let's, first motion. All in favor? Let's have a roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, and I would like a motion on the amended motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a roll call. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval. And I would suggest to everybody that you bring your concerns to the village board, who has the lawful right to vote on these.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning item 13010, Crystal Pacheco of the barber shop with Robert Sanova, regarding the property located at 128 South Cass for the following. A special use permit request to operate a ground-floor barber shop in the B1 limited business district.
Hi, I'm Crystal. I'm the owner of the barber shop. I'm a lifelong resident of Westmont.
You got any water issues tonight? Any water issues?
No, none. I've lived in Westmont all my life. My children attend Manning School. I'm here because the barber shop's been in business since 2010. I've been one of the principals in that location. Back in December, it was agreed upon with the landlord that the new lease was to be put in my name as of January 1st. So I went into the village in December to renew the business lease and to put it into my name so that there was no lapse since the other principal would no longer be there. I paid the $50 fee, filled out the renewal application for the license. I got it a week later at the barber shop. And then 12 weeks later, I was contacted by the village and told that there was a mistake and that I needed to fill out a new application and pay the $350 fee. And that's why I'm here today, was to request a special use permit. The landlord's representative is here with me if needed to answer any questions.
Okay, fairly simple. Anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Let's...
Somebody was coming up.
Landlord.
This is the landlord's representative.
Excuse me for being too fast.
You were. My name's Dan Hogan. I represent the landlord. That's my father-in-law, Bob Sanova. Crystal's been at the shop for 2010. Besides, she cuts my hair, my daughter's hair, my wife's hair, and many people in the community. There was a problem. There's two principals that were in the shop. Crystal would pay the principal, and it never made it to the landlord for several months. We decided Crystal was the responsible party of the establishment. So it was decided, Crystal, the lease is coming up. You have always been the go-to, but the lease was in the other person's name. Things got mixed up. There hasn't been a change in name. The number's still the same. That person's gone, and we put the lease in. So we're hoping that you would give everything you can to Crystal. She's been a wonderful tenant, and I think she's an added asset to the community. She has donated her time to the community. Just recently, at the St. Baldwin, Baldogts. She was one of the shoppers. So, what do you think you could do? She's a wonderful tenant.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Commissioner Thomas, if you would?
Good luck and fort. That's all I got.
Commissioner Pill?
All for it. Sounds good.
And nice haircut you got there, too.
Totally against this. Kidding, kidding. Good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Good luck to you, and I'm sorry that I had to come up with that $350.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I was for it when, the last time, when it came in, your previous counterpart came in. I'm okay with it. No problem with it.
Commissioner Fleet? Good luck. I think you'd be a great addition. I also. Okay, we have a request for a special use. Can we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
This is for the barber shop at 128 South Cass Avenue. Criteria number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. A prior barbershop operated from this location pursuant to a special use permit without incident. The proposed barber shop will not result in adverse traffic, noise, vibration, odor, or in other ways adversely affect the public health, safety, or morals. Criteria number two, the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed barber shop is a low-impact use which has existed at this location without any effect on surrounding properties or property values. Criteria number three, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Surrounding properties are fully developed. This use will occupy an existing tenant space, and this use will not impact or affect the redevelopment or improvement of surrounding properties. Criteria number four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The property is currently served by adequate utilities, accessways, and other necessary facilities. No new development is proposed for this use. Criteria number five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The property contains adequate off-street parking and curb cuts. No new development is planned. Criteria number six, the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variances are sought in conjunction with this proposed use, and the use is proposed to meet all codes and ordinances.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. Under Planning and Zoning Item 13010, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item A, special use permit request to operate a ground-floor barber shop in the B1 limited business district. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Anton. Question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, you have our recommendation for approval, and staff can tell you when you'll go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole. Okay? Good luck to you. Planning and zoning item 13011, Philip Stewart of Standard Market, regarding the grocery store located at 333 East Ogden for the following. A, zoning code variance request to reduce the required front yard setback for an existing grocery store in the B2 general business district for the purpose of constructing an addition to the wine and cheese department. B, site and landscaping plan approval. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I have a little electronic support with me, so I'll take a moment while I plug that in.
It's actually Ken Lieber, though.
It looked like it.
Okay, so as you're aware, Standard Market operates a 35,000-square-foot specialty retailer located in Westmont, Illinois. And we have the great pleasure this spring season of having an expanding business. And so what we're seeking is a 288-square-foot addition to our wine and cheese department, primarily to mitigate existing customer flow. So if you happen to have been in our department, you'll know that on certain evenings and on certain occasions, whether it be a cooking class or just general business, the seating is relatively inadequate. And if you remember, about a year and five months ago, when we were seeking approval, the wine and cheese department is roughly 3,400 square feet. It has eight seats at the bar and an additional eight seats that are flex space. So sometimes it's used as merchandising, and other times it's used as seating and is not always available. I would say that probably on Friday and Saturday evening, most often, those seats are obviously fully occupied with another three times the amount of people available in the department without a seat. And we'd like to provide that for them. So this particular addition is as much about establishing an opportunity for revenue growth as it is just taking care of existing customers that we have right now in the department. So just to compartmentalize it for you in your mind before we... So just to compartmentalize it for you in your mind before we go to the visuals, you can see that the current department is 3,400 square feet, as I mentioned. The addition itself is 288 square feet. It's about an 8% increase. As I mentioned before, the total market is around 35,000 square feet, so this would be an eighth of a percent increase in the square footage of the total store itself. We've got eight permanent and eight flex seats. This expansion would bring the total seat count to 41. And 75% of the expansion area is located on a patio that is pre-existing outside to the north of the property. And in clement weather, if you've been with us this past summer, you'll know that that gets seated right now, weather permitting. I'll reference an overhead plan view where you can see the location. I apologize for the size. The width is 24 feet, and the extension is 12 feet to the north. The, just for reference, the current furthest extent to the patio is 12 feet to the north off the front facade of the building. So this particular expansion, although in certain areas does, it does not exceed our sort of maximum penetration towards the street as the building currently exists. There's also a line of sight overlay so that you can get a perspective on, again, how far that penetration northward works.
Is it considered in the center?
What you see now is a artist's rendering of what the 12-foot-by-24-foot expansion will look like. We have tried diligently to make it in keeping with the existing thematics of the market itself, so what you see is the storefront glass that exists now in the market, and we feel it'll seamlessly integrate into the front of the market and probably enhance the view, particularly in the evening. From a landscaping perspective, much of what we have in the front of the market will be reutilized for that location, so if you were standing in front of Standard Market today and looked at the front of the patio after the addition is built, the landscaping would appear much the same as it does right now. From the inside, again, another artist's rendering. You can see one just proposed configuration of seating. It probably does not represent what the final seating configuration will be, but this is representative. And it's a little bit scrunch, but that's another overhead plan view of what the additional seats would look like. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments or concerns.
Okay, we'll go to the public. Is there anybody here who will speak on this issue? Please, if you would, sir.
My name is George Matoka. I live across the street at 44 Lynn Court, Claritin Hills. I represent the condominium association for the eight homes on the private street that called the Saks, right across from Standard Market. When this project first became known to the residents of our area through the notice from the developer, it was agreed that the parking lot would be screened from our subdivision with evergreen-type materials that would be tall enough to screen the parking lot, and that never happened. We complained to the developer about that. I complained to the village about it, and there was nothing addressed to take care of that situation. Right now, it's completely transparent. The shrubs are not tall enough at all, and they're not filling in at all. So I believe your codes and your ordinance requires residential screening from a residential neighborhood, from the commercial, either by fence or by landscaping that you can't see through, and we do not have that. The second question or problems, small problems, that we've noticed since the Standard Market has been open is we occasionally get parking on our private street for employees and customers for the Standard Market. I know that's hard to control, but since we can only park on one side of our street, and usually can only get about four cars on the whole street, when spaces are taken up, there's nothing for the residents. The second concern I would have, or third concern, is the driveway onto Richmond Street, the main driveway. There is a stop sign there, but a lot of cars come flying out of this grocery store, especially in the evening. They don't stop at the stop sign, and it's pretty dangerous with the amount of traffic, especially at rush hour, going up and down Richmond Avenue. And I don't know what can really be done about it, but maybe something that's more identifiable, maybe flashing red light that they make on stop signs would help the situation. But too many cars just roll right through that, right into the intersection with traffic zipping through at 25 and 30 miles an hour. They don't always stop. There's almost been a couple of accidents there that I've personally seen. Those are my comments.
Would you care to address his concerns?
Yeah, I sort of can take them in sequence. First, on the landscaping issue, and my partner Vince might be able to elaborate on it in somewhat greater detail, but the current landscaping, as represented in the market, complies with the landscape requirements that were developed at the time the market was approved. Since that time, some additional screening has been added to the eastern portion of our property, and in fact, this morning Vince had communication with Mr. Matoka in which he would add, and you'll have to correct me on the number, a series of evergreens on the eastern side.
So, good evening, all, and all due respect to George Matoka. I know him personally, professionally. He's a gentleman. He's an honest guy. We did have a conversation prior to development. We have far exceeded anything the village has requested of us, including landscaping, sidewalks, shrouding on our lights, et cetera, et cetera. When I received an email this morning from Mr. Matoka at 1:00 the day of the hearing, with approximately five hours before this hearing was to take place, I responded and said, "I will add an additional eight trees to the east property line." We don't owe this. We've far exceeded the code. I did it because I was trying to help George. His response was, "I would like to see trees from the southern property line to the driveway entrance." And I'm saying, enough is enough. We will put in some more trees, because George is a good guy, but we don't owe these trees, but we'll do it. That's my comment.
I have a question. Did you complete the landscape drawing that we approved?
I, okay. I not only exceeded the drawing that you approved, your comment was, at the time, "This is an unbelievable landscape package." It could be seen on recording. Your village forester, Bob Fleck, said that our landscape plan is a model for the village of Westmont going forward. And like I said, we went through three public hearings with the village of Westmont. I've met with all the neighbors. I'm friends with all the neighbors. I'm happy to continue my friendship and relationship with George. I will not be extorted. We will put these trees in, these additional eight trees, because we want to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Vince? The lady immediately to the south?
Her name is Wendy Knopka. Her son-in-law works for us. We have a wonderful relationship with her and with all the neighbors.
I would like everybody to know, I met Wendy one day in Sam's Club, and she said, "I know you." I says, "Oh, boy." And she said, "I am so-and-so, and I live immediately south of the Standard Market." And she said, "You know, I was very much against it." She said, "Since then, my husband and I sit outside, and we look at the store, and we're looking at the front of the store, and we like it very much. We love the landscaping. My daughter babysits for Vince. My son works for him. She said, "We are extremely pleased." So as far as the landscape plan, it...
I think it's being gracious. I mean, that's...
It so far exceeds everything we could ever hope to expect. It, you've been the best customer we've ever had, and I wish we were more of you.
That's true.
We love Westmont, and we love all the people coming here. We love Claritin Hills. I really like George. I respect George, but I think that I've gone above and beyond, so that's our position.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think on his second point with respect to traffic and vehicles turning left, you know, the first question would be the germaneness of the question relative to this particular expansion. As I mentioned, the 288 square feet are really, although, yes, we would hope that it would perpetuate growth, it's primarily designed to service our existing customer base. So, you know, we don't foresee some sort of pulse increase in traffic on Richmond. You know, the other thing that I'll add to that is that, of course, people are individuals, and they're going to drive how they please. I will say that, you know, we're very zealous and passionate owners about our property. Vince and I run around the parking lot every day, sort of managing traffic to a certain extent, or, you know, speaking with customers who are not driving appropriately or in a manner that befits the lot itself. So certainly do appreciate his concerns. Again, I don't feel like it's germane to this particular expansion, but we do everything we can to control the, you know, the behavior of our patrons, in particular with respect to their access to Richmond. And anytime there has been an issue with respect to employee misbehavior in terms of parking, you know, we've dealt with that instantaneously, up to and including termination for parking violations, so.
And again, the questions that the gentlemen raised are really not the purview of this board as to a variation. So anybody further from the public will speak on this? Close the public comment. Commissioner Fleet?
I think it's, your expansion here certainly looks good in plans, and I think it'll, the way you guys always bring things out, I think this will be an improvement to the eyesight along the way, and again, maybe another helpful flag for people who are wondering what's in that big building, that here's some things they can see as they drive by. Will the bump out cause a line-of-sight problem with the monument sign at the northeast corner?
Yeah, we don't believe so. Certainly that was addressed in the line-of-sight triangle application, which was a little bit hard to show in that overhead plan view, but staff has taken a look at it, as well as our engineer, and we don't believe that's going to be a problem.
More specifically, or augment that comment, the leading edge of the patio at present is 12 feet, so that was the rate-limiting factor for our addition. So it does not break the plane of that monument sign.
That's it for me. But sir, did staff have anything they want to add before?
I was gonna get staff. I would never ignore Jill. Again. Do you care to?
Oh, see, let me go ahead now. I was just gonna say that the applicants are very eager to get going, and they're gonna be going to committee of the whole tomorrow night, so assuming everything goes well this evening. And we have verified the line-of-sight diagram, and it works well for the corner, and we're pleased that the landscaping will be continued beyond the expansion. We have no other concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
I applaud you on the way this looks, the rendering, because I think it's gonna look like that in reality, you know, and it's just gonna blend well. And I wish you luck. I happen to be one of those guys standing around before, you know, so I know when it gets packed.
I don't like to see it any more than you enjoy standing there.
Yeah, so, you know, it's a pleasant experience, and wish you luck with this.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I'm happy for you for feeling the need to expand so quickly, and I'm all for it. It looks great.
Commissioner Anton?
I wish everybody was like you guys, seriously. I mean, there's, people need to take more attention to their businesses, and you guys always do the extra mile. I've never seen even garbage in your parking lot, so I can't see how there can be a complaint. Seems like an impossibility to me, but a really good job. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Pill?
Yeah, it's really been an asset to the combined communities, and it's really put, I think, a nice shining star on that area of Ogden Avenue. And I think this can only further enhance both its reputation and its look, and I think there'll be some additional exposure items that you'll get with the bigger glass out there and stuff like that. I think it's gonna be great. I wish you a lot of luck with this. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
With, it's worked out so well, you know, and with your business and that, and I remember all the neighbors that came here, came out, you know, and the concerns, and rightfully so, they had no idea what this monstrosity was going to be, and you bent over backwards. I appreciate it very much. And you're always going to have, they're always going to have some glitches in that, and you deal with them as you come upon them, and we can appreciate that. I would suggest we talk to the police department, have a complaint about traffic, that they can put a squad car there maybe, or whatever, and that's their job. And you're not in charge of how people drive. So I'm for it, supportive.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? May I make one other comment, too? I would just like to point out, pretty please, I'd just like to point out that this property, I remember walking it before our set of hearings, and this has been a remarkable transformation. I mean, there was rodents, garbage dumping, there even was, looked like some people in residence perhaps in some of those areas, and this is quite a transformation. So I know that no project is going to please everyone 100% and 100% of the time, but I think this has gone a long way, and you guys have done a great job of taking that whole area and really making it look nice.
That's it. Thank you.
I can only agree with all my fellow commissioners. I would classify you folks as exemplary neighbors, and I'm just happy you chose Westmont. All right, since we have a request for a zoning variance, may we have a reading of the findings of fact, please?
Standard Market at 3 through 3 East Ogden requests for a variance to allow an encroachment into the required front yard setback for a building addition. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The applicant is proposing a modest encroachment into the front yard setback to allow for the expansion of its wine and cheese department to meet consumer demand. Due to the existing location of the wine and cheese department, expansion would not be possible without this variance unless a complete and cost-prohibitive redesign of the entire store were to occur. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The wine and cheese department is located adjacent to the front yard setback line. It is impossible to expand this department without a reasonable encroachment into the front yard setback. There are no other alternatives to expansion without interfering with required off-street parking and accessways. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of locality. The proposed expansion is modest in size and will not create any line-of-sight issues at the corner of Ogden Avenue and Richmond Avenue. The proposed expansion will mirror the architecture of the existing building and will complement rather than alter the neighborhood.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby approved. Under planning and zoning item 13011, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A, zoning code variance request to reduce the required front yard setback for an existing grocery store in the B2 General Business District. So moved. Second. Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, item B, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, a site and landscaping plan approval.
Still move?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. I have a question, one thing. Greg, you think you should have voted on here as much as you eat there?
I wasn't sure that you were.
All right, gentlemen, you have our request, and staff can tell you about tomorrow evening.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thanks for waiting.
Staff? Any further?
As one of the applicants mentioned earlier, we have a comprehensive plan survey available online, and you can get to that on our website, westmont-il.gov, and you can vote. online, and you can get to that on our website, westmont-il.gov, and you can vote about what you would like the community to look like. So it's a vision preference survey. So I encourage everybody to get involved. We have a lot of, we have a lot of responses already, but we'd like to see everybody else pitching as well.
Any commissioners, anything? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I don't want to go.
So moved?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.